Hello, everybody.
Howdy.
My goodness, we're gonna get right to it.
Yes, because you were editing two other videos and this came in. This takes precedence.
Yeah, this is gonna take precedence. I got one of these the other day and I was just kinda waiting to see if this was just this congregation or if this was gonna be a countrywide thing, a worldwide thing. I wasn't sure, so I was kinda holding off, but I wanna thank you Pemos who have sent me this information. My goodness. There's gonna be a special meeting. Jehovah's Witnesses, you Pemos, there's gonna be a special meeting the first week in December. This resolution, I've got two of them here. One is gonna be read to their congregation on December 2nd, the other one is December 9th. And it's interesting because it probably depends on whether your congregation is a trustee, run one, or a corporation, because these are very different resolutions. And I know this is gonna be kinda long because I'm gonna read these. And I'm not gonna put them out onto the internet just yet, because they have to be redacted and scanned. And I just wanted to hold off because I didn't wanna get in trouble.
And you Jehovah's Witnesses have to begin to comprehend something here. You're gonna be having a business meeting and they're gonna get you to pass a resolution that is gonna give absolute control to your governing body over everything that you own. This is, this is huge, friends, because this is what I've been saying all along. When it comes to the Watchtower Bible Crap Society, they're only gonna have one or two choices in what they're gonna do. They're either going to file bankruptcy or they're going to have to completely reorganize and restructure. And reading part of this before doing this video basically confirms what I've been saying from a business perspective, because it looks to me like the business of the Watchtower Bible Crap Society is going away and they're gonna become a complete ecclesiastical entity. Because we have, as a community, let our governments, our officials recognize what this organization has been doing over the decades.
And it also makes us wonder if they are in trouble either in this country or several other countries, because there is some major changes, see? And Jehovah's Witnesses, you're being sent these resolutions. Are you taking the time to read them? Grab them from your secretary that is sending you these resolutions, read it, save it.
Because see, this is something different that Watchtower is doing, because these resolutions are being sent to the individual publishers, correct?
Yes.
Those that are of legal age. This ain't gonna be sent to the little five-year-olds and the six-year-olds and the eight-year-old that got baptized. This now becomes a legalized structure that they're doing now.
Yeah, so I'm gonna read this notice of special meeting that is coming with these resolutions.
But I guarantee you, Kim, on the night that these are read, the Jehovah Witness is gonna go, "Oh, whatever the governing body says," and you have just lost everything.
Yeah, now, made us think of here recently, like last couple of years in the UK with the Kingdom Hall Trust.
Right.
You know, that was put in place and it was kind of like a gradual thing. And then finally like, "Oh, look, we'll take care of everything and let your elders, you know, have more time to shepherd the flock." That was very reminiscent of, you know, when we were reading this. So this is the notice of the special meeting. And as you can see, I redacted it, but it's an actual...
The minutes.
Notice that went out. "A special meeting of the congregation's baptized adult publishers will be held on December 9th, 2020, after the conclusion of the midweek meeting. This notice to all of the congregation's baptized adult publishers is being sent either by email or postal mail." And then they talk about because of COVID, they're gonna be doing it on a Zoom video conference. "An in-person meeting at a physical location will not be held. Those qualified to vote will be able to attend, vote, and participate in the meeting by following the usual instructions for joining the midweek meeting, which are repeated below." And as you can see, I even have the information with the passwords if I so choose.
Well, it's not like we can vote.
The purpose of the meeting is to consider the business shown below. See, this is a business meeting.
Business.
Yeah, if you have any questions about the meeting or how to participate, please contact me. And then it has the secretary's phone number.
Redacted.
"Proposed business. Propose the following resolutions to adopt the attached amended corporation bylaws."
Ooh, the corporation bylaws. What about the religious laws, Jehovah's Witnesses?
See attached resolution and proposed bylaws. Number two, propose the following resolution to sell the water rights for the property owned by the congregation. See attached resolution.
Selling water rights? What the hell?
See, and they even have the resolution already printed up, ready to sign.
And they'll sign it without even thinking twice about what they're signing.
Yeah, because right here they have voting in favor and against. So they already have this resolution printed up. Okay, the bylaws of the blank congregation of Jehovah's Witnesses, the corporation. Passed and adopted as the bylaws of the corporation by a majority of all the members of this corporation on this blank day of December 2020. So they will fill that in.
See, and there again, passed by the majority and the majority's gonna be, yep, 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 because you've all been programmed for decades just to say yes to whatever the governing body says.
Article one, members, okay? Now, we did a video a while back saying that Jehovah's Witnesses are no longer members of the congregation. Listen carefully to what this says. "Member qualifications. Persons eligible for corporation membership..." Did you catch that? "Corporation membership are only those who are fully dedicated to Almighty God Jehovah, baptized as one of Jehovah's Witnesses, are completely in harmony with the doctrines and organizational arrangements set forth by the ecclesiastical governing body of Jehovah's Witnesses, and report ministerial activity to the English Congregation of Jehovah's Witnesses, blank, herein congregation. Anyone meeting these requirements, his full aid shall be designated a member of the corporation. Persons not meeting these requirements shall not be, nor be deemed to be, members of this corporation. Any member who moves from or becomes inactive in the above-named congregation or is no longer one of Jehovah's Witnesses shall be automatically removed from membership in the corporation without the need of his resignation."
I wonder if this is something done to get rid of the Pemos. Think about it, friends. Think about that.
So then it goes on to talk about meetings of the members and how in September they're gonna have, you know, meeting of the Board of Directors and their annual meeting and special meeting, and it's gonna be by the Board of Directors and voting method. Directors, there's a lot of legal ease. But here on page two, point three, point two, corporate powers. "The director shall have the power to conduct, manage, direct, and control the affairs of the corporation, to call special meetings of the Board of Directors if the demands of the corporation make it necessary." Now remember, this is just a congregation, one single congregation doing this. This is not Watchtower as a corporation of, you know, worldwide work. This is one congregation that is adopting these articles, these bylaws. "Call special meetings of the Board of Directors if the demands of the corporation make it necessary to negotiate and enter into contracts and do all acts and things necessary or expedient in carrying out the purposes of the corporation. No indebtedness..." Tongue twister. "...however, shall be incurred without the consent of the majority of the members. Exercise of corporate powers. In exercising any of the powers herein conferred upon them, the director shall act in complete harmony and unity with the body of elders of the congregation and the direction of the corporation's members." And then it talks about if there's a vacancy, you know, they can vote in a new member. The Director's Annual Meeting, Board of Directors Meeting, officers. But I wanted to get to the important part here. They even have the paper already...
It's all gonna be signed.
They even already have the minutes of this meeting. Fill in the date. "A special meeting of the members of the congregation was held via video conferencing." Notice they call them the members of the congregation at this point.
Right.
"All members present either received proper notice of the special meeting or waived receiving notice by attending this special meeting without objecting to lack of notice." So see, they have to make this all nice and neat legally.
Right.
"The item on the agenda was the discussion of the sale of water rights for the property owned by the congregation. The members voted in favor of the following resolutions." So see, they already have the resolution written up as the congregation being in favor of selling this congregation's water rights. "The congregation approves the sale or transfer of the water rights for the property located..." And then they give the address. "...upon sale of the water rights, all of the net proceeds from the sale are to be donated to the worldwide work of Jehovah's Witnesses. Each one of the officers named below acting individually unless otherwise required by laws hereby authorized to sign and deliver all documents, certificates, or instruments on behalf of the congregation that he determines in his sole discretion to be necessary or desirable in order to carry out the foregoing resolution, including but not limited to contracts of sale, deeds, closing documents, and tax forms."
You know, it begs the question in my mind at least, that if they're willing to sell the water rights and give it to the worldwide work of Jehovah's Witnesses, is that just another example of how desperate they are to make money? How desperate they need money that they're willing to sell away your congregation's water rights? I gotta wonder, or is there something bigger coming down the pike a little bit later for the entire globe?
Yeah, and the thing is, is if you sell your water rights from a piece of property, if you later go to sell that piece of property, well, then it's harder to sell because the new owner also has to agree that they do not have the water rights.
Exactly. See, so you guys have gotta really pay attention to what they're doing with these resolutions and what you Jehovah's Witnesses, "Oh, wait a minute, it doesn't matter, because they're all legal to sell their Kingdom Halls, because they all love..." What? "They love their meetings on Zoom. They could just stay at home."
Okay, now this is another resolution from another congregation. And it's interesting because these resolutions are on opposite sides of the United States. You know, one's on the West Coast and the other's on the East Coast. "Articles of association and bylaws in the blank congregation of Jehovah's Witnesses," and I'm not gonna say the state. "The members of the congregation agree to adopt the following articles of association and bylaws." And then they have the name of the congregation again. And this congregation has been an unincorporated nonprofit association since 1989. So you can see the difference. You know, one is a corporation and this one is an unincorporated nonprofit association. I'm sure that will change.
Oh, yeah.
"Article four, purposes. The purposes of the congregation are to worship Almighty God Jehovah and to support the rulership of His Son, Jesus Christ."
No, they support the rulership of the governing body. That's what they, that's what they support.
"Number two, to gather regularly for Bible instruction and mutual encouragement and to be strengthened in our relationship with God and prepared to do His will. Number three, to learn the truths of the Bible and the faith and beliefs of Jehovah's Witnesses, all of which are based upon the Bible. Number four, to recognize the spiritual authority of the ecclesiastical governing body of Jehovah's Witnesses."
And there it is. There it is, friends.
"B, in accomplishing its purposes, the congregation may, one, where legally permissible, acquire by gift, legacy, bequest, purchase, or lease, hold and manage and/or mortgage, sell, convey, or otherwise dispose of real estate and personal property."
Dispose of real estate. In other words, they're gonna sell it, because you're gonna sign this giving all spiritual authority to the ecclesiastical entity that is the governing body of Jehovah's Witnesses.
"Number two, maintain financial accounts in the name of the congregation." "Okay, article five, authorized representatives. The congregation's authorized representatives shall be the members serving as duly appointed elders and acting as the coordinator of the body of elders, the secretary and the service overseer, collectively known as the congregation's service committee. The coordinator and the secretary are authorized to execute all official documents for the congregation by fixing the name of the congregation and signing their names as authorized representatives."
Ooh, so when a lawsuit comes down the pike, ooh.
Guess who's responsible?
Guess who's legally responsible by signing this document?
Okay, article six, members. "The members of the congregation shall be individuals who are fully dedicated to Almighty God Jehovah, baptized as one of Jehovah's Witnesses, are completely in harmony with the doctrines and organizational arrangements set forth by the governing body, and report ministerial activity to the congregation, AKA turn in your time. Anyone meeting these requirements who is at least eighteen years of age shall be designated a voting member of the congregation."
Ooh.
"Any member who moves from the congregation or is no longer one of Jehovah's Witnesses shall be automatically removed from membership in the congregation without the need of his resignation." "Article seven, meetings. The congregation shall regularly hold meetings in accordance with the spiritual direction of the governing body." Okay, some of this I'm gonna skip, but I wanna get down to article nine, personal liability. You guys are gonna love the information in these next two articles. "No member of the congregation shall be personally liable for any of the debts, liabilities, or obligations of the congregation." Like child abuse cases? "Article ten, property. The property of the congregation is irrevocably dedicated to religious purposes and no part of the net earnings or assets of the congregation shall inure to the benefit of an elder, trustee, any member of the congregation, or any private individual."
Hmm, we've seen some of that over the years, haven't we, friends?
"No substantial part of the activities of the congregation shall consist of the carrying on of propaganda or otherwise attempting to influence legislation." But isn't that what Watchtower does when they try to get some of this legislation changed or go to these UN meetings to get the persecution taken off of them?
It's what they do.
If you try to, you know, do away with the Russian ban, you're interfering with the Russian government.
Yep.
"Nor shall the congregation participate or intervene in including the publishing or distributing of statements, any political campaign on behalf of or in opposition to any candidate for public office."
Now, how is that any different than you having a letter-writing campaign, Jehovah's Witnesses, when you put in an article from the Watchtower stating, "Oh, Jehovah's gonna destroy all the governments." It, this is exactly what you've been participating in, so is this now gonna change, Watchtower?
Yeah.
See?
"The congregation is organized exclusively for nonprofit religious purposes within the meaning of Internal Revenue Code Section 501(c)(3.)"
See, and that's where we have a huge discrepancy, because you're supposed to be doing this for nonprofit for, for the purpose of religious activity. Putting out magazines stating that Jehovah is gonna destroy the governments if you don't comply to Jehovah's organization is in opposition to what the 501(c)(3) is really there for.
"And is not organized for the private gain of any person. Notwithstanding any other provisions of these articles, the congregation shall not carry on any other activities not permitted to be carried on, one, by an organization exempt from federal income tax under Section 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, or the corresponding provisions of any future United States tax code; or, two, by an organization contributions to which are deductible under Section 170(c)(2) of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986; or the corresponding provision of any future United States tax code." So what did they know that's coming down pretty soon from the government?
Or have they been hammered already because they're selling properties worldwide for an absolute profit?
I heard some little birds let the IRS know about their little property sales.
Oh, I'm very well aware of that, dear. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's it, guys.
I heard it, I heard it.
Wink, wink, yeah, wink, wink.
"B, in the event a dispute ever arises over who is entitled to own or possess the property of the congregation..." See, they're expecting disputes, you know, to come...
Right.
Yeah. "If the congregation cannot decide the dispute in a manner satisfactory to all of the members, the dispute will be decided by Christian Congregation of Jehovah's Witnesses, a corporation that serves the interests of Jehovah's Witnesses in the United States." Now, it makes me wonder, are there some schisms going on within some of these elder bodies?
But here's the absolute qualifier to that statement. And you Jehovah's Witnesses had better pay attention to this qualifier.
"Jehovah's Witnesses in the United States or by any other organization designated by the ecclesiastical governing body of Jehovah's Witnesses."
Ooh, the eight governing idiots.
They will decide who gets the property.
So when there's a dispute, who do you Jehovah's Witnesses honestly think that your ecclesiastical governing body of Jehovah's Witnesses, you know, the eight governing idiots, who do you think they're gonna decide in favor of? Not those that are disputing the claims, but those that are, want the claims to be processed in favor of Watchtower.
The company men.
The com... Oh, the company men. Yep.
"The determination of Christian Congregation of Jehovah's Witnesses or of any other designated organization as described herein will be final and binding on all members, including those who may have disagreed or dissented." Makes you wonder, what in the world is going on within the organization?
Oh, I think we've done our job all too well, Kim.
Now, this is the most interesting article that we read. Article 11, dissolution. "Upon dissolution of the congregation, after paying or adequately providing for debts and obligations of the congregation, the remaining assets shall be distributed to Watchtower Bible Track Society of New York, Inc., a corporation organized under Internal Revenue Code Section 501(c)(3) for religious purposes. No assets will be deemed to be received by Watchtower Bible Track Society of New York, Inc. until such acceptance is evidenced in writing." This is the aha moment, this next sentence. "If Watchtower Bible Track Society of New York, Inc. is not then in existence and exempt from federal income tax under Section 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, or the corresponding provision of any future United States tax code, then said assets shall be distributed to any organization designated by the ecclesiastical governing body of Jehovah's Witnesses that is organized and operated for religious purposes and is an organization exempt from federal income tax." That's a long sentence. Okay, let me repeat that. "If Watchtower Bible Track Society of New York, Inc. is not then in existence..."
Are they going away as Watchtower Bible Crap Society, New York, Inc.? If they're not in existence, how many you Jehovah's Witnesses are gonna catch that? How many?
This organization has been known as Watchtower Bible Track Society of New York for over a hundred years. Why would they put something like that in if they weren't concerned about them not being in existence or maybe having to file bankruptcy?
There's the key.
You know, these are questions we all need to be asking.
Before you just sign this, what do you mean, "if you're not in existence"? Why would you be going anywhere? Maybe what the apostates have been saying for the past seven or eight years is now coming to be. Are we that much of a threat to you now, Jehovah's Witnesses, that you have to put in this, you know, this whole resolution? Is not then in existence and, and exempt from federal income tax? Is all of this property that you've been stealing and selling, does the IRS now recognize that you are not tax-exempt from selling that property? I wanna know. Everybody on the other side of this camera wants to know, because that's some pretty legal words that you're saying right there.
Those five little words, "is not then in existence." Those five little words raise such huge question marks now, because here's a corporation that has been in business for over a hundred years, and they're putting this in their articles, you know, their bylaws?
Well, there again, "is not then in existence and exempt from federal income taxes under the 501(c)(3)?"
See, and it makes us wonder too, in Australia, you know, if the government, you know, if Parliament is about to go after them for their nonprofit status...
That's right.
...under Watchtower Bible Track Society. You know, is this why they're starting all these other little corporations? You know, there's so many questions about all of this now.
And what you Jehovah's Witnesses have to recognize, that what comes before this is that you are gonna give all your ecclesiastical authority to the governing body. This, this is, this is a bait and switch. They're baiting you with the mindset, "Oh, Jehovah, you know, the brothers will take care of it, the governing body will take care of it, and you ain't gonna bother reading what all this is about, because you're just gonna surrender your own God-given authority to this governing body, and then you're not gonna have anything."
Or are they about to switch all of this to the Kingdom Hall Trust Fund? Like they did in the UK and some of the other countries.
Exactly.
You know, we don't know. We're only asking questions. But the wording on some of this is very peculiar, you know, very interesting. Cause it goes on, "These Articles of Association and Bylaws were adopted at a regular meeting of the congregation on December 2nd, 2020." So they already had this printed up, at which a quorum was present by an unanimous majority vote of the members of the congregation who were qualified by the terms of these Articles of Association and bylaws to vote. So they already have this all printed up, ready to go.
And we know that they're gonna sign it without giving any forethought, because you've already been indoctrinated to put your implicit trust in your governing idiots.
Yeah.
What a snare and a racket.
So it's gonna be interesting to see, you know, if there's gonna be any more resolutions, what's gonna happen. Like I said, this is scheduled for the first week in December. One of these, their meeting is December 2nd, the other one is December 9th, after your midweek meeting. And just the wording on some of this, and for a congregation... And for a congregation to be selling their water rights, I mean, you gotta, you know, be scratching your head over that one. Because if they go to sell the property, who is gonna buy property where they don't have water rights? Right?
Exactly. Exactly.
So thank you, everybody, for watching. We wanted to get this out as soon as possible. And hopefully I can get our other two videos edited this week and get them up also. But thank you, everybody, for your help and sending us this information. We appreciate it very much. And as soon as I'm able to scan and get these up on our website, I will put the link down below, you know, so that you can have, you know, these resolutions. I have to make sure they're, it's all redacted, you know, because I didn't, I don't wanna out the Pemos.
Right. That's the biggest thing, friends.
Their protection is our main concern. If nobody wants to believe this because I've redacted congregation names and addresses out, well, then that's on you because I am gonna protect these Pemos.
And there, and there again, just wait till the first week of December and you'll be reading all of this in your congregation. Or some of you may have already received these and you've already signed your name to them without even giving any forethought to what the hell's going on.
Well, the reason they have to send these out in, you know, previously to the meeting is because they're expecting you to read these carefully so that you know what you're agreeing to.
Right.
So when you get these resolutions, read them, keep them, and make sure of what you are going to be voting for.
Right.
Yep, so you all have a wonderful day.
Bye.
Bye.